Yeah, we're just waiting to get the technology operational.
I wanted to come from the city engineer, that way I can at least have supporting evidence.
Ready to go? Alright guys, seven o'clock, let's get started. We'll say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave is absent tonight, so he won't be here, otherwise we got everybody else, so we got a forum going. It's a good thing. Alright. So, we got the regular agenda in front of us. Guys, any additions or changes you want to do on that? I think we kind of went over all this, so. Brent, we good? Cars, you know?
Just one revision, Agenda in seven, remove. Agenda in seven, Perry, for addressing.
I did that already.
Oh, you already did it?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Well, there we go.
Okay.
So.
Motion to accept agendas, written.
Okay, got a motion from Brian, accept the agenda, can I get a second? Okay, Chelsea does the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, consent agenda. Alright. Is there anything on there?
Yeah, Cory, I have a couple of things coming up here.
Yep, good.
You need a second, I gotta drag it up. Item, excuse me, item number thirty-two to David Belkey, thirty-two. He requested a fireworks permit, which I, we authorized, but he did not sell, so I'm asking the board that they refund his money.
Okay, he decided not to sell any this year?
What he said, yeah, okay. And the other item is number thirty-four, it's a progressive building for Widmer Road, we're still looking, working on the audit, I think we're about a month away from completion. Other than that, kind of business is more. Any questions, you guys? Ask me anything.
What's the circumference of the world?
Matea?
Oh, Mr. Encyclopedia!
You said anything, man, I'm sorry, I just kind of went with that. Okay, you guys got any other questions, or is there anything on here? I mean, all pretty much boilerplate to me, so.
I think it's, it's all good.
Okay.
So Vance, the check register, does that show up here, or because it was on the last consent agenda? Because it was on the last consent agenda, we approved that, right, so there's nothing here, we shouldn't expect to see it here, correct?
Correct.
Alright.
But it's, it's good to go?
Yep, yep, good to go.
Okay, I'll mail it tomorrow.
Yep, so, motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, Brian makes a motion to accept the consent agenda, give me a second.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. You wanted to talk about the, you want to talk about the change order with the street improvement, or was that in there, maybe I missed that?
We certainly can talk about it here.
Just go ahead, real quick, Jim.
What it was, was on the Northwood-Southwood paving project, there were manholes in the street that were already accounted for, but they were encased in concrete, and they were a twenty-four inch diameter, typical standard now, our minimum is twenty-seven inch diameter, so during construction, the city of Forest requested Brenton and the Public Works to change out the castings and the adjusting rings. So this has got, the second page of that has the breakdown provided by Border States Paving to, for, so for removing and replacing twenty-four inch castings with twenty-seven inch castings in concrete was two thousand three hundred fifty dollars apiece, two of those, and then remove a twenty-four inch casting and existing asphalt replaced with twenty-seven inch, nineteen hundred fifty dollars and five of those, so. The change orders for an increase of eleven thousand three hundred fifty dollars, this was included in the bond prices, so this is within the budget to do it, so.
Yeah.
And it has already been completed under the authorization of the city administrator and works, so.
Yep.
Something doesn't add up there, because it's thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars.
That's, there's a, there's, the reason for that is it was because of their quote.
Their quote was incorrect?
No, I don't think that.
Or they, they had some money from their previous?
There was a bid item for it.
Oh, so they had partial coverage?
Yes, we had, we had a bid item for manhole adjusting, and there were two that stayed that way.
Oh.
And the other ones didn't, so that's where the difference is.
So say that again, Jim, we went from twenty-four to twenty-seven, what was?
The whole, the diameter of the manhole itself, twenty-four was the standard at one time, it is now twenty-seven inches, society's getting bigger apparently. And in order to adjust it, there were some that were in concrete, and they were kind of going to sit goofy with the world once the overlay was placed on it, so the city staff requested that they be changed out.
Who missed it?
I don't believe it was missed, I just believe it's an addition too, because we had adjusting them in the first place, but it was a matter of being able to adjust the manhole and replace the riser rings underneath it that were at the same time versus having it be subpar, I guess, as it goes.
Oh yeah, and having to do it some other time, but it's going to cost us more money.
Sorry to question, but it was, it wasn't worked, it was done at twenty-four, twenty-four inches and then redone at twenty-seven?
No, 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 these were done when they paved road the first time, this was an update to standard now, so.
Yeah, a few years have transpired since that road had been worked on.
Also, I'll expand just a little bit, just so you're aware too, the condition of some of those rings was fairly poor, so it was a preventive measure not to have to rip up brand new asphalt, that was the reasoning behind it too, so we don't have to come back and be into them, or it costs us significantly more.
Should it have been something that was caught in an inspection in the, in the original bid?
Hard to say, I don't.
Maybe, maybe not.
It's hard to say on that one.
Typically, on a street improver project that, you don't look at the, look at the manholes, look at the rings and stuff like that, so you certainly can in the future.
Especially now that we know that that's a possibility, we can just meet.
One thing to check when the next project's, say, take a look at the manholes, if they need to be replaced.
Yep. Okay.
So do we need motion to approve this?
Yep.
So moved.
Okay, John makes a motion. Brian did a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, special meeting minutes, that was from the last.
Is that June twenty-sixth?
Yep. I don't think we need to read through them unless you guys found a change in them. That was just pretty much a special one we did. Pretty much right to the, yeah. Okay, so, accept the motion.
There was really no decision on that meeting at that time, right?
We talked about the health insurance.
We talked about the different plan, but we didn't, we.
The council did take action on that one, so.
Oh, that's right, we picked one of the, one of the.
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, if anybody doesn't have anything else, except the motion to accept the special minutes, special meeting minutes, Brian does make a motion, yes Vance?
Brian, you brought that, can we go back to the consent for one second? On the bills? Item number, I should have mentioned this, item number thirty-five is now the new premium.
Oh, so this is related to, and this is reflex, an increase of?
Yep.
Well, what percentage was it?
Eleven.
Eleven percent, yep.
So this will be the premium now for a year.
Okay.
I was going to mention that, I forgot.
So that effectively starts in August, right?
Yeah.
That's the, okay.
Well, so this is prepaying for the August premium, basically?
Yep.
So, motion to approve the minutes?
Yep, Brian did a motion, can I get a second from someone on the special? Okay, John does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, next one is the council minutes from last meeting. I don't think there was anything on there either that was out of tune that I saw, unless you guys caught something? Went through quite a bit of stuff, but.
Three pages of notes, awesome.
Yeah. Okay, anybody got any questions?
That's correct.
Accept the motion and accept the council minutes as they are presented. Okay, John makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Vance, it comes to you, financial statements.
We've got on the financials. Quick look at the balance sheet, here we got general fund, three point five. Always like to, your special revenue funds, take a look at account number two zero five, three thousand. Our sales tax fund balance, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, we're going to use a portion of that for our water meters, or the new meters, rather. A healthy general fund balance of one, one point oh nine.
Okay.
Looks good there, the debt service funds were right on schedule there as well as the principal and bond payments.
So, the account cleanup for these will happen after the audit is closed out and everything, that's the plan?
Okay.
That would be a welcome day, shorten that list up a lot, right?
It might be a little more condensed than what you're looking at. Capital projects, that's the outstanding projects that we have going on until right now. Lucas, I think, is working on some bond payment there, or what might that be again?
Street two thousand seventeen seven, street two thousand seventeen eight, and Terragardens, two thousand eighteen dash three.
And under the enterprise funds, we're showing a deficit of twenty-six thousand, which is?
Caught up a bit?
Yeah, we caught up a bit, but again, we haven't reflected the error in billing.
Oh.
So that will appear on the.
Take about eleven thousand, right?
About ten, ten, eleven thousand.
About ten, eleven thousand, but.
So that'll show up on next month's billing then?
July statements will.
So, is that, based on we're issuing a credit, right, that's how we're handling that, it's just everyone, hey, you don't have to pay this, you get it, a month free?
Yeah, it will affect.
Or a portion.
Portion, right, correct.
It will affect the sewer fund.
Yep. Okay.
Staros with investments, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. These are our long-term liabilities that we are currently working on.
Twenty-four, we got airwood, it's done off. Right? Another, garbage paid off, awesome. All the eight airwood pays two.
So currently, we have a lot.
We haven't started this, so nine, September's when our first payment is due.
Well.
Is that a lot, do you think that's not a?
This is a loan, so Jim, is, is this, this is SRF loan, so we pay as, as we go on.
Right.
I just set the schedule up so you had an idea of what the four hundred and twenty-two thousand is.
But essentially, this is when it's due, but we start payment in September, right?
Yes, yes, according to my schedules, yes.
What amount would that be? What amount do we pay?
Oh, I didn't bring the schedule with me.
Oh, okay.
On the revenue side, general fund revenue for the month was thirty thousand fifty-four, year-to-date, five twenty, pretty much in line with what we estimated last year.
So the sales tax was a little bit lower this month?
Yeah, it was, it did drop a little bit. It's been twenty-six to twenty-eight typically, but.
So we'll be able to trend that over some, you know, trend that over a period of times, we can see what that, you know, that monthly average is going to be there. But it's interesting that it drops a little bit this summer. Let's, let's probably be watching something else.
Collected sixty-three hundred in specials, assess the revenue. Water and sewer fund, we billed out fifty-nine thousand three sixty-five for the month. It's the hit of the quarter, so it's a little bit higher than typically. The, under the appropriations, I like this, because if you look at the bottom line in June, it's the year-to-date, five forty-eight, we're almost right on the money for six point.
All right here, for where we should be?
Yep, versus one million eight.
Okay.
So we're doing.
Right on plan.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Yeah, estimated pretty good last year.
Yep.
That's a good.
Even though we've had some unexpected expenses, but we haven't spent money on other things that we thought we were going to spend money on, too.
We're right in line, it looks great. We now, under the enterprise funds, we pay out salaries, of course, our garbage contract. This is just a list of the disbursements that went out of the general fund checking, you can look at that at your leisure someday.
Yep.
We're in good shape, years progressing really nicely.
That's good to know, we're right on budget.
Yep. That's all I have, if you have any questions, call me.
Okay. Bill, any other questions?
I guess I would add, just really quick, on the financial statements, it's financial related, just so the council knows, we are setting up accounts, the accounts with Starion Bane. Vance and I met with him last week, and then we'll meet with him again later this week to begin that transition, because we're going from Laris to Starion.
So that will, that will include, so that'll be effective August, basically?
We're going to phase into it, so it's going to be a transition time.
So like, for example, the CDs, will the investments stay where they are?
They'll probably stay put, until it's maturity time, and then we review that, it doesn't make sense to pull them out until.
So like, when you said renewal in September, does that mean that that's when they, so we're, September this year is when we would have an opportunity to say, okay, we want to move that fund that we can't.
You typically get around that time, sometimes a little bit beforehand, but you have a window to where you can either unactively renew, or you can take it out and put it into another one, but we'll see where the best rates are at the time, and see what is to the best interest of the city, so.
Alright, sounds good. Alright.
Motion to accept the financial statement?
Okay, Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, John does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we'll talk about Wall Avenue a little bit, Jim, you wanna? You want to lead in on that one?
Certainly can.
Was there something to present here, or no?
There is, I think it's more just an.
Just update.
It's more of just an update, Cory and I, Mayor Peterson and I, met with the Stanley Township Board on Tuesday night last week, we just discussed the obvious shortcomings of that road in its current state, and we talked a little bit about improving it on the city side, improving it on the Stanley Township side, or maybe a joint agreement between the city and the township to do something in the interim, until that gets a permanent solution, and then we discussed at length annexation of Westbrook, I shouldn't say we discussed it, it was just a topic of discussion, there were some residents from Westbrook there who had, were willing to let their feelings known on annexation to the city, so there was some discussion had on that, and then also, what could be done to Wall Avenue in the interim, if the township could enforce load restrictions on it, or the city could enforce load restrictions on it, kind of things along that lines, what can be done temporarily, so. Nothing was, no decisions were made, anything, it was just a ability to kind of talk to them a little bit about it, and realize that the city has some, some vested interest in the improvements to that road, and they do.
So they were open to a joint, I mean, so what were their, some of their options they were talking about for?
Basically, one of the things, one of the things that I presented to them, and we kind of looked at the map, you know, what section of the road does the city own, and what section of the road is the township? One of the things that I talked to them about was possibly doing, like, say forty percent, thirty-five to forty percent, we would help cover some of the maintenance on that road. We have some skin in the game on that road as well, so.
No, just actually paving it, or just maintaining it?
Just maintaining it.
Just maintaining the gravel?
I think what I'm considering on that road right now is triaging, you know, to help them, help the township pay for, to keep that road maintained, because, you know, it is development vehicles going back there and getting, getting hammered on. Again, what Jimmy was talking about, we had a conversation about, you know, okay, so when is that road going to get paved, well, okay, then it comes down to who's going to pay for it? Because I don't think everybody understands, the city does not own that road, we own pieces of it, but the township owns the majority of the road. So it's to come up with, you know, and to be honest, right now, paving it would be silly, because the construction traffic is going to kill anything that we put down there.
Unless it's concrete.
Yeah.
Which, that we're not going to spend that money either, so.
No. So, that's what we're trying to do, is see what we can do to help the township triage that road, and then it kind of morphed into that, that conversation, that wasn't my purpose of being there that evening, it just got brought up. I think what we should do though, is kind of like we had talked about that evening, I'd like to meet with the Westbrook residents over there, have them come and just have a meeting, and talk this over a little bit, they seem at least to talk about it, and see what, you know.
Hey, if they're willing to talk, that's, that's half the battle, right, just having the conversation.
Have the conversation, and just see, nothing is going to happen immediately, obviously, because this is just going to be an ongoing discussion.
Information be added.
Yep, and I want to have a conversation with them, so, because I don't want people to start speculating on things, let's have the conversation, so people understand what we're, what we're coming from as a city, because yes, there is development on both sides you and I, no, you know, or there's city on both sides you, I should say. So it's a conversation that's going to need to take place. So that's kind of how we left it, so I'm going to talk to Brent a little bit about that, and try and set up a time in August, and get letters out to all of them, and then let's try and have a meeting, and just get the conversation started.
So that's a good next step.
So that's kind of how we left it, and I think we should just continue to have ongoing conversations with the township, just because of, we have a vested interest in that road as well as they do, so. So that was pretty much, unless I missed anything else, Jim, I think that was pretty much what the conversation was that night.
That's what we talked about, yeah.
Alright, good, so again, just to keep that line of communication open. Okay, on the portfolios, Brent?
As y'all, everybody is well aware, the portfolios, we have a few portfolios that are unassigned currently with the changeover with the council, and potential introduction of a new portfolio, those three are law enforcement, which is the new one, being proposed, and then we have MetroCog, and then also economic development is, I believe, a new one. So what we're looking for from council is, you can sense it, or what portfolios should go to who? Discuss a little bit the pros and cons of each one. I know John mentioned interest in both MetroCog and law enforcement. Talking to Chelsea a little bit, there's some interest with economic development. The MetroCog and economic development, they're all important, but those two are probably more substantial portfolios, and we typically try not to overload any council member with too heavy a load of portfolio assignments, so that's something to keep in mind, too. Looking for what the council would like to do, if you'd like a recommendation, I could provide one, I would recommend the law enforcement and MetroCog with John, and then economic development to Chelsea to get that ball moving, and also, there's less potential conflict of interest with that type of structure, and that's also keeping in mind, keeping in mind the workload, portfolio assignments, like Brian, he has infrastructure, and that is a full-time model right there, and then.
I got lots of segments.
And then Dave having with work, and also the personnel and operations side, that's pretty heavy portfolios right there, too.
Chelsea, does that sound good?
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay. I'm good.
In here, again, it's kind of fluid, right?
It is, yes.
It isn't hard and fast, we all support each other on all the different portfolios, because you have contacts and infrastructure, I mean, we're all kind of crossing over here and there, but having a primary point of contact is always good.
Yep, that's what we need.
We interact well.
And then Chelsea is working on Bean Days and Parks, that side of things, if there's no issues with those, I don't believe the council has given a formal yes or no. Going with that, but I believe assumptions were received with those, and she's already been jumping into Bean Days, she's very appreciative of, and no pressure, but I think it could turn out pretty well, so.
Right, no pressure?
Just a little.
Early sixty days away, but no worries.
But just brief discussions I've had with her, it's going in the right direction, I believe, so.
Yep, my plan, you know, I've been thinking a lot about it since we discussed it on Friday, and so, lots to figure out yet, but want to make it fun and exciting.
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
That's awesome.
So Chelsea's also taking art boards, artwork to the?
Yes.
And then where would, with Bean Days, would communication, would that also tie together?
Well, can.
Bean Days communication, what do you mean?
Like horse happenings?
That one, that horse happenings hasn't really been decided as a portfolio per se, we are kind of taking that on internally with staff to work out that change in dynamics in there, and then we can brief council as needed, or if you decide you want to have a portfolio with horse happenings in the future, we can do that, too, whatever your preference is.
Yeah, I would say it would be its own portfolio, because I think that would be pretty, you know, fairly dynamic.
If you like it.
I'd volunteer you.
Let's get to the Bean Days.
If you like, I can add that on my list, and if you want, say, one person or another, we could do.
I guess the question is, you know, so we're in that middle, mid-edit cycle for August, right, so there's going to be content that is going to be prepared and so forth for the August issue, so here again, we're trying, we're trying to get into a rhythm of, you know, third week of, third week of July, or third week of each month would be the time when we get the content together that we're building the following horse happening, so, I mean, it's.
So next week.
So I guess that's the question.
Is August covered?
I'll have to talk to Sharon, but I believe that's why we're trying to have more transition with staff, because then we could jump in.
That's what I was wondering, so we continue to communicate with Sharon until we get that transition completed.
Yeah.
My next question.
Get your budget and all that first.
Yes. I think for right now, the horse happenings will just stay as it's been going.
For right now.
Yeah. We'll handle that for a while longer.
And since Bean Days is on September seventh and eighth, the horse happenings usually comes out, like, what day?
Right there, I mean, it's usually the first, first couple, first week, first few days of the month, so.
What do you guys think about, is that cutting it too close, or any information on it?
We would still be doing it here internally with staff, so the horse happenings, one, the August issue would go out just before.
So technically, we should have as much horse happening, or the Bean Day stuff in this coming issue? As possible.
Yeah. We do have a little bit of time.
Yeah, I'll see what I can.
But we may have to, there again, at the website, you have Facebook and so forth, to get your word out on.
We have other media we can get it out on, so.
We got to talk about that more.
Yeah.
Does, does Bean Days have any money?
I have no idea, I just found them on Friday. I'm hoping so.
Let us know.
But we have a little, you know, I've got some direction on how to figure that out, so.
Yeah.
And what's going on.
Thank you.
So what I have here then is Parks, Bean Days, and Economic Development with Chelsea, and then MetroCog Law Enforcement with John. And then MetroCog, Law Enforcement with John, those are adjustments.
Okay, sounds good, hope you guys are alright with that then? Perfect. Alright.
You don't need a motion on that, right?
No.
No?
Nope. Okay, employee handbook then, Brent.
I'll just introduce Jenna Wilm here, she is our HR consultant. She has quite a background with HR duties and responsibilities. And she has been working with us on the employee handbook, drafting this. And then also she'll be working with us on some other items such as employee performance process and job descriptions and a few areas like that. Councilmember Fennelon and I have worked quite a bit with Jenna, bouncing off ideas. Looking into what's best practices, what are acceptable practices with her experience with the government side of HR. We saw it was very helpful to know also what are other communities doing. So she could talk more about the personnel policy or employee handbook. It's a drastic change from where we were before, but it does cover us on a lot more HR related issues that have not been addressed in the past. So it's best to be proactive than reactive when it comes to HR.
Yep. Welcome to Horace.
Yeah, thank you. As Brent said, for those of you who haven't met me, my name is Jenna Wilm, and I've been contracted to provide HR services for the city of Horace. The first project was to develop and administer an employee handbook. We started this project a couple of months ago, and I've been working very closely with Brent on the different policies and how the Horace would like to administer those. I'm not sure how in detail you want me to go with the handbook, I know that you were all given a chance as well as staff to review it. Lucas also has reviewed it, made some revisions. But what we did is incorporated a lot of the federal regulations and state regulations that weren't necessarily in the handbook brochure that was provided to staff before.
I guess I would say if there's like three things that are, were the big changes, we could just expound on those a little bit, that we added?
I don't know.
Fair enough, I'm just, I mean, I know there was a lot of mods that were made to it because of where we were at before, cause I mean.
I think the biggest thing is that there were a lot of practices that were done, and so now many practices have been put into writing and made into policy. So that there is something now for staff to go back on when they say, how is this handled, or how do we do this? Or, you know, when I'm on call, how do I get paid, different things like that. It's now in writing, rather than before, it was just a practice.
Okay, you have a question?
Yeah, it's back up of always, where do you have their hours?
Right there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, where we go?
You done now from eight to five? Is that for all employees?
Yes.
For full-time regular employees?
Full-time employees, regular work week is eight to five.
So how does that work? The pump goes off in the middle of the night, and I'm off duty.
There's another section addressing just that specific category.
So they'll be paying them overtime then?
Well, they have the opportunity for comp time or flexing hours out or overtime. There's a lot of different areas that we're able to work with, so. But the standard work week is eight to five. There are deviations at times, but in general is eight to five. Yeah.
In reality, it's, it was kind of happening before, right? I mean, the pump goes off, somebody had to go man it and go fix it, right? So it was happening, it was happening, this is just putting.
Yep.
But this is really just putting it into writing, this is the standard policy, right? So it's kind of, I think we were following the same procedure before, that was the intent, you know, it's just, this is putting it right.
Yeah, again, kind of like what she said, we're putting a lot of this stuff in writing that was kind of commonly known, but now we've got the policies on piggybacking, which is good, cause then everybody, it's all there.
Were there quite a few things from the state or federal regulations that we didn't have?
I think with, you know, FMLA leave and Americans with Disabilities Act, again, I don't think that Horace wasn't following those. But just having those in writing, a lot of employees may not be aware of those benefits and that type of thing. The other thing is the public records, that personnel files are a public record in the state of North Dakota, and just making sure that that's in writing. So when you do have new staff come on board, they are aware that their personnel files are a public document.
Okay, do you guys have any questions on this? I mean, to me, it's just like I said, it was a big update, talking long overdue, it needed to happen, so I appreciate all the work you put into this.
Is there anything that we would have to significantly change from the way, was there anything that came up out of this policy that we said, alright, this is a significant departure from the way that we've operated in the past?
One, one area we've touched base, and I could explain that a little bit, the vacation and sick are different from what we've had done in the past. And also from the draft, the draft that you see right now versus the one that was emailed out for just FYI for review. There are a couple little tweaks in there in regards to how vacation leave is handled. Employees could only accrue so much, and then they're capped, and you can only carry over so much. We did not have a carryover policy before. So you can only carry over eighty hours, which is still two weeks of vacation time that you carry over from one year to the next. If they don't have, if they're not down to the eighty, say they're at eighty-four, they would be paid out those four hours at the end of the year. But they're encouraged, they're gonna be encouraged to take those, that vacation time to where there isn't that payout. But also because vacation is an opportunity for employees to get away from the office, you know, take a breath and step back. There's a reason vacation time is given to employees. Also, sick leave, that is, employees are allowed to carry over or build up to a certain amount of hours. Vacation and sick would be given out in increments instead of just you get so much all upfront every year. You would be able to accrue it throughout the year.
So are you saying that typically at our employment anniversary date, when I, we would renew our vacation for three weeks? Is that out the door?
Well, they would get to three weeks, I believe, for this year, but then after that, it would be accruing hours.
Each pay period?
Yes.
They would, they would.
I understand that, but I think there's two people that they have anniversary employment dates in August. So I will supplement their vacation for a hundred and twenty hours?
So I guess that's the question, is the sick time, is the sick time long in with the vacation time?
No, those are two separate.
So you take sick time or vacation time off? So when you take the time off, you have to categorize it as sick. So that, so that would, is that kind of your question?
No, right now, they get three weeks upfront at their anniversary.
Oh, okay.
So we're saying that there would be a transition period, they would have their accrued vacation. But then after that occurs, then they'd be accruing vacation in the future at the incremented rate.
Right, so you, if it's like.
Cause they've already accrued those hours at this time.
So just to be clear.
So.
But I think there's two employees. There's two employees that renew in August. So can I add a hundred and twenty hours to their vacation time?
Well, it's all gonna depend on when this transition happens, right? Because after the transition, they will get eight hours of pay period, or six hours of pay period. And then they accrue that six hours per pay period, and then, you know, equaling the equivalent of three weeks of vacation for the whole year. So you take their total hours that they get over the year, divide that by twenty-four, and that's how much you'd get per pay period. And then, so they don't get all somewhere upfront, they have whatever their balance is carrying over from last year. And then each pay period, they get six more hours added, or whatever, whatever it is, added to that. So they accrue it slowly over the year.
When is it going to go into effect?
Well, the policy takes effect, if it was approved by the council, it would take effect tomorrow. However, the transition would account for the time that is already accrued. And then from that point on, the policy would take effect for the vacation.
So if they have eighty hours right now, let's say they have eighty hours, or they, they, let's say they're at their maximum, eighty hours is their maximum, then they can't go over that, right?
They could go over it.
Okay, so.
At the end of the year, they can't carry it over.
So they can carry it over to eighty hours after that period, but that, that first pay period, they get six hours added.
After that point.
So then, instead of getting the hundred and twenty hours added, then they burn it down.
And then the other adjustment here is just that sick leave, if an employee was to leave or no longer be with the city, they would not get paid out that sick leave. That was in consulting with councilmember Fennelon.
What did you say?
They wouldn't get that payout right out before.
I mean, that's just standard practice across almost everywhere.
When I looked at the paragraph, it doesn't say anything about. Okay, let's see. We were hired at three weeks of vacation, at your anniversary date, it renews. Okay, if you use it all, you get a hundred and twenty hours, is that what I'm supposed to post?
I guess I don't, I don't know how that transition plan, that would be an internal discussion. I know Brent and I have had discussions about internally, do we just pay out anything at the end of the year? So I guess it, it would probably be more Brent's decision along with the council on that transition plan itself.
Well, it doesn't say that.
Right, because that wouldn't be something that we would put in the employee handbook.
Why not?
Because it's just a one time, it won't ever happen again. So it would just be a separate transition from the actual employee handbook. This is to go into effect if approved and move forward, so that would be a transition for everything in the past. So it would just be a separate procedure. Does that make sense?
No.
Can I maybe try?
Not at all.
Are you asking if an employee has?
Let's say I hired him on August fifteenth, okay, and he's got no vacation time left to use at all. Can I renew a hundred and twenty hours for that guy who spent here for many years? That's my question, can you add it back? And then plus accruing?
And because, well.
If you used it all, though.
And that's, so it's the timing, it's the timing of when this thing is going into effect, and if he's already consumed all his vacation for the year, is effective what it is, right? So if, if he were, the same thing would be true, and I guess I'm looking at it right now, and I don't see that we have a policy to say, if they burn all their vacations, there's no, they can't go below zero. I mean, that, that is a concern, right?
I believe there is an unpaid leave policy that we did put in there, so.
Can't go below zero, so it'd be unpaid, anything below zero would be unpaid.
Right, it would need to be unpaid, and it would have to be approved by the city administrator.
But in, in the future, in the future, as they accrue, let's say they, like it says right here, they're gonna earn ten, ten hours every month, at the first day of every month. So if they burn those ten hours that month, then they're still gonna be at zero. So they're, instead of getting a hundred and twenty hours and then going down, they're just gonna go real low, right? If they burn it all the way.
In, in order, in order to, in order to reduce the confusion related to a transition, because that does not have impact really on the overall policy itself. What I could do is I'll work with councilmember Fennelon and Ms. Wilm there on the transition plan to where it could be appro rated. So how much vacation has an employee accrued already from this transition time? So if they were hired, if their new year starts on August, let's say fifteenth, then they may have a total of twelve days of vacation accrued at this point. And then they'd be accruing those days after that. But I'll work with councilmember Fennelon and Ms. Wilm on transition, and then we can discuss that at the next council meeting. Yes, cause every, every employee would be treated on a different basis. But like I said, to have a concern impacting the overall policy when it isn't really impacting that policy, I'll sep, you know, we separate the issue and have that transition.
Nobody's gonna lose off their vacation.
What they have accrued, they would be.
And I think that's a concern is that if somebody has a trip planned, and then they're getting their vacation time spread out now, and they didn't, weren't aware of that, then that puts a dent on their vacation.
So we will discuss that and present that transition plan or inform the council of transition plan tied to.
Change like this, right?
Sometimes changes are painful, but like I said, in order to keep, keep that moving forward.
Yeah, and maybe they get half their time upfront, and then the rest is accrued or whatnot.
We'll work that.
Yeah, they'll let you guys work that out, those details you guys can handle.
I think you got, cause definitely there's two things, one is the employee manual here in its form, and the other part is the transition.
Correct.
So we don't wanna get too crossed in conversation.
And I would like to point out, prior to you approving the handbook, I plan on adding a table of contents in there, so I don't know if you need to say.
I was gonna ask about that, so.
Yeah, I was just making sure that everything was going to be approved, you didn't want anything added or taken out before I put that in there, so.
I think, Lucas, you've gone through it, I mean, you're okay with it. Yeah, but I figured, so I mean, that was probably the most concerned, just make sure it's legally is all squared away and. So, alright, so then do we wanna just sit on this for till the next meeting?
I would recommend you move forward because the concerns weren't impacting the actual policy.
I recommend you don't.
They were, they were not impacting the overall policy, they're impacting a transition, which transitions occur after, you know, you have to know where you're going from beginning to end.
This needs to be explained to the employees a little bit better than it is.
What piece of it do you feel needs to be explained more?
That's what I've been talking about.
Just that, that one policy?
Absolutely.
Just that transition piece of the policy, okay.
I think we need to talk to the people that work here and make sure they totally understand.
That transition?
What you're trying to do here.
Now, something I would like to point out, we had a comment period for employees, that was pretty much all last week, and this was not brought up prior to that time during the comment period.
One employee was gone for half the week, and we understand, we saw this, we don't know when it's going into effect though, so.
What do you guys think?
Well, there's two things, I, I think the, the form is, is the issue, and I think the transition is a separate issue. You know, and I think the transition, we have time to get the transition explained and go through the process of it. That doesn't change the effect of adopting employee handbook. So I don't think we should get all caught up in that, in that part of it, so. I, I don't have a problem with moving forward on the implement, implementing the manual.
Approving it.
Approving it and then making sure the transition is done, I think that's conversation that could be done.
Because in some regards, if we hire somebody tomorrow, this, this would be applicable for them. These would be the new rules for, and we hire them all. Now, for current employees, yes, you're right, that we gotta figure out that transition, you're right, absolutely. And we gotta, you know, if there's questions about it, and it's gonna be on an individual basis, right? Some of it's going to be.
That's all I'm asking, right?
Different situation from you, different situation from here, you know, so. But, but John's right, it is gonna be a unique thing for each person, that it is two separate, the transition versus the plan itself. So I guess I'm okay with, you know, moving ahead with, with the plan, because if we hire somebody tomorrow, now, you know, we, community development director, right? We hire him tomorrow, this would be the plan that we would, that would apply back.
And Brent, do you see any issues with working it out, that if everybody's not gonna be satisfied with the way that you?
And that's gonna be, this is a living document, right? This thing is gonna change every year, most likely, and they always do.
As for concerns, I think there's always gonna be concerns. Looking at doing, like I said, such a measure like taking the employee's anniversary date and doing a prorating from accrual, then if you're looking at it from that perspective. You could say the employee has earned that much vacation over this period of time, and that going into the availability of vacation that they would have. At the end of the day, they would have no difference into what they have accessible at their anniversary date. Uh is, at the end of the day, they would have no difference into what they have accessible at their anniversary date. So if we were to prorate it right now, an employee has anniversary August fifteenth. At August fifteenth or that next pay period, they're gonna have that much vacation reflected into their pool or their available time. In addition, they're gonna have, they're gonna be accruing time, so it's accessible, you know, come like Christmas time. If they don't use any leave, they're gonna have even more leave, which is more advantageous to the employee having that. It puts the responsibility on the employee to manage their time, but they're gonna have that more time even available than what they're used to.
I fully understand doing a new manual. I did this in my own company about a year ago, and I were changing things up. It it's, it's difficult for employees to understand that at times, but you have to draw a line and you have to start somewhere. And everybody knowing, and everybody needs to understand, they're not gonna lose out anything they have earned in what they're gonna get. We're not going backwards on that part of it, and it just, it's having the discussion properly with the employees, so they do, they do get that.
I think we understand the employee handbook. Yeah, that was well said.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Uh I think we're missing one holiday.
There was.
Yeah, we have twelve.
There there would be Christmas Eve, that should be added in if it wasn't reflected into this.
Adopted in March by this board.
Yes, Christmas Eve should be added in. That was adopted by board, I agree, and I didn't have.
Right there, under section five. Nope, you were there, page twenty-one.
And thank you, Vance, for pointing.
Yep, no problem.
There you go.
There's nothing productive on Christmas Eve.
Christmas Day, Christmas, so Christmas Eve.
It's Christmas Eve, yes.
So twelve days, okay.
Adopted in March by this board, it's in the permanent, so the city affords.
I thought we, there was one that we added, was it Martin Luther King Day?
Yeah.
And that's after them there.
And President's Day.
Yeah, you're right.
They're, they're very similar. They're actually more generous than what we have in West Fargo as well.
That's what we are in March.
More generous?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that's the way it works. All right. Okay, so with that change.
So, Corey, for the minutes, for the minutes, what should Ateah be writing regarding this handbook thing that we will discuss it?
I think the thing is, we're, we're adopting this new policy, adopting a new policy for the city of Horace as an employee handbook to be applied for current employees and new employees with a transition period. That will be handled per staff person, per employee. That will be.
So approved tonight with an effective date of?
Yes, that's what I'm looking for.
All with approval date.
But it'll be approved tonight with an effective date of either tomorrow or next week or?
What I would recommend is the effective date be July seventeenth, because the concerns that were brought forth really are not regarding the policy itself. They're regarding a transition.
You you would just prefer to have, have the policy in place?
Yes, and then, so the approval of the actual employee handbook would be the employee handbook with the addition of Christmas Eve as a paid holiday. And then.
Let's make that a motion. I would make that motion to adopt the handbook with the addition of Christmas Eve.
To be effective.
To be effective.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
July seventeenth.
Yep, all right, so John made the motion, make it effective tomorrow. Brian does a second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then Brent, you'll handle the transition.
And then the transition, I will work with council member Philon, and I'll work with Ms. Wilm and discuss the transition. I likely be involving a prorating of vacation that's already accrued. That way, it's an easier transition of um.
I mean, the idea is not, not cheat anyone out of vacation. It's a matter of just saying, okay, let's figure out what that transition is.
The other thing I would recommend is let's get that transition done ASAP.
Yep.
Okay.
We don't need any motion on the transition. Everybody's comfortable with that.
Make it happen.
Yep, it's uh internal.
Yep, make it happen internally.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, Seventy-Sixth Avenue Improvements, Jim. Uh Brent, I don't know which one you two want to take.
It's a tag team, I guess. You want, you want me to start? Well, I guess I could start off really quick and just saying, um we've had many discussions, say staff, uh Jim and I, or Jim and I have met with school board, uh with the school district, I mean, and also Cass County to discuss the future of Seventy-Sixth Avenue, really along County seventeen going east a half mile out. Looking at potential uh improvements to that roadway to be able to handle future growth and also the potential, or the schools. Yet the school bond referendum was a pass, or passed, Seventy-Sixth would definitely have to be upgraded in order to handle any traffic associated with that. So uh we've asked uh Jim to work up some concepts. We've been discussing those concepts. We went with a fairly aggressive, built-out concept, work our way down, so that, and Jim could expand on that.
The two items that the school has asked the city to help them determine is, one would be a potential cost assessment for that road. They are aware of the fact that they are a major driver of that road being improved, and the improvements necessary are because of them. So they would like to know what accommodations will have to be made because of that. One that we've been looking at is potential layouts of a road becoming, shifting to the south. Right now, there's up to five homes roughly and a new subdivision on the north side of the road with a utility superhighway along the north side. So any expansion to that road, any right-of-way that would need to be required, acquired, would be towards the south side of that road, which directly affects the school. So they would like to know what a potential shift in their layout would have to be to get some right-of-way. And the other thing they're looking at is cost. They have a number that's in their bond referendum right now, and they'd like to know, have an idea of what they could be on the hook for, or what they would be responsible for paying uh once this comes to fruition. So we've worked up a couple of concepts, meeting with the county highway department. They are looking at potential for reconfiguring the intersection of Seventy-Sixth and County Road seventeen. Right now, with pavement widths that are there, they could do, uh and adding a turn lane each way and reconfiguring that intersection with striping. They looked at the potential for a roundabout, uh stoplights, and they are leaning towards stoplights right now. That's the most of, cost-effective method in their mind for the improvements to that. Uh there are some alignment issues with the roundabout that they weren't quite comfortable with, so a stoplight or a signalized intersection is what they propose, so um they are looking at ways of funding portions of that. It's, sounds like it's gonna be a lot of improvements to the intersection itself, not much more on County Road, on a highway, uh Seventy-Sixth Avenue that would fall on the burden of the city if they would. So uh at the request of the city administrator, we looked at doing a scaled-down version, which is a three-lane with turn lanes, and we've looked at all the way up to a five-lane urban section with turn lanes, storm sewer, et cetera. So um of that, we're talking in the sixty-seven million dollar range, so. And this gets you about a half-mile road. That's where we're at right now. It would encompass all of the school entrances and any type of development south of, so in the southeast quadrant of that intersection. So very preliminary numbers, like I said, being driven by the school needing to know what their potential assessment could be and any impacts to their proposed layout and site, so that's where we're at. There will be some discussions with MetroCog on this too, just as, as you know, the city is working on a transportation plan and Seventy-Sixth Avenue corridor studies, so this um will be in the best, it it will try to be incorporated as best it can be. Brent is gonna meet with MetroCog, and John, you'll get involved in that now too, so.
So Jim, let me ask you something. You know, we had talked about this, we sat in at the school, and you know, we talked about obviously the big plan and maybe a smaller plan. What I'm wondering is with that, with all the construction that's, via traffic that's gonna be going on there, if we were gonna do any improvements here for the next year and a half, if we expanded the gravel road, fixed what we currently got there and maintain that gravel road for a year and a half, without having to get into the expense of paving it, then once the construction traffic is off of there, then we get a little bit more serious about putting down some pavement?
That is an option. It hasn't, it hasn't been looked at at this moment, to be honest with you.
No, I know. I'm just, I'm throwing it out there because I'm just trying to see how we save the pavement. Because you know it's gonna get hammered.
Right.
And I'd rather not have to do anything with it again, but if we got a better, you know, the road needs improvement right now anyway.
Yes.
Because next spring, regardless, it's gonna have to have something done to it, otherwise we're gonna have construction traffic sunk in the road.
You will have a wall avenue times two.
And I'll be getting calls from Russell about it every other day, right?
I have never called you before.
I know, not yet you haven't. But you got a bulldozer stuck out there, you probably give me a holler.
No, no, I will, I will be calling you for it, because I'm gonna want you to provide me with two non-deer gators that are heated and enclosed for transportation to my art department, my neighbors.
Gotcha. So that, that's what I'm just thinking, Jim, just to, it's it's more to bridge the gap here, so we don't have to come up with that kind of monies from whatever entities this is gonna come from.
Oh, and there's, it's a phase. I mean, we've gotta look at this, this might be the first phase.
Exactly.
Get to that point.
Yep.
Second phase, is there a, okay, the five-lane, full-on gas, sixty-seven million, that's a massive expense.
It is.
There's gotta be. Here's my question, I'm sorry. You're gonna do a five-lane on Seventy-Sixth out to a two-lane Cheyenne? What's the point?
Yeah, that's, I'm asking you, it's like, okay.
It has been identified that seventeen could be and probably will be the bottleneck to this whole thing. So we have presented that to the Cass County Highway Department. They've taken the information. I don't know if they've done anything with it, but it is something that we have brought up to them.
I don't think so.
That.
I'd like to see some options um with some drawings or maps on the road that would show, you know, like Mayor Peterson's talking about just doing a Band-Aid maintenance. What's the cost on that versus do we start structurally expanding the road?
Go ahead, Russell.
I mean, I think I need to explain to you something about MetroCog, which most of you, I don't think, really understand. MetroCog is the organization which is in place to get state and federal grants. You will not get state or federal grants aside from MetroCog. Uh to phrase it the way we've brought up this last meeting, this last week, we can do anything we want down here. Absolutely anything that we're willing to pay for. There will be no state or federal funding. The other thing is that the Seventy-Sixth corridor, as well as the traffic study for Horus, has hit the budget cycle. But by by that, what I, what I, what I mean is, it's just been finally approved through North Dakota DOT in the last several weeks. So that means it has been approved, because that's what it takes, even though it starts, request here, goes to MetroCog, then moves up through North Dakota DOT. What's been approved? The study.
The study.
The study. And you cannot have any state or federal funding until you have these studies completed. So anything you wanna do now is, it's all your order, and you can't push. You can't push MetroCog to do anything else, because you have to, you have to get into the cycle. You have to make each request, and the cycle, the stage that we are in the cycle is the studies have been approved. Without those, you get no funding from any other source other than your own pocket. When we joined MetroCog, I don't think we understood really what a benefit they can be for us. Because you can't do anything fast.
Right, and that's the thing, it's gotta be, your events have to be planned in years, not months.
Well, and then see, you see, the fact that we made the, that we've got the studies in place, which should be starting this fall and winding up sometime next year.
So, something I would add, you know, I I agree with what Russ is saying, my experience working for an organization like MetroCog before. Um some aren't as heavy on the transportation studies per se, MetroCog may be. However, even if we had a study in place, the timing of their transportation program, we would have to be four to five years out, most likely, to be competitive for funding. Uh the timing of this project with the schools is not four to five years out. We're talking one to two. And so that's the unfortunate thing tied for funding opportunities is this project likely wouldn't be eligible to get into the mix.
Do we know if West Fargo has talked to MetroCog about this?
It, it's the school district and.
Right, I mean, it's, it's.
It's probably been on the radar a little.
It's been on the radar for, not, not officially a MetroCog, but the, everybody's kinda known about this. We've had conversations with Fargo.
Yeah. They don't have a place at the table.
Yeah, the school district.
West Fargo School District doesn't have, doesn't have a place at the table.
But they've had conversations with people who are. I mean, we've sat in rooms together and had these conversations. It's just, again, the event horizon is out.
And I wanna stress to the council too, that uh what Jim brought up, you know, five to six million, that was a complete build-out if that whole area vision, we had commercial hit the floor running and everything.
We gotta start high. That's, that's.
And we're working, yep, and I just wanna stress, we're.
But we have to have a number to look at for the high side, and that we, if we have to do an incremental.
How are we gonna get from there to?
Yeah, if we have, if we can, if we can at least get that road stabilized, so assuming this bond referendum passes, that we've got a way to get construction traffic there without hammering that road to pieces, so it can't be used in the spring, that's what we gotta come up with. We don't have to pay, but we don't have to come up with all the fanfare, but we need to come up with a way to stabilize that road and keep it functional for at least eighteen months. Am I wrong, Russ, or any longer time window? I mean, that's what I'm looking at here.
Well, the only, I was just talking to Jimmy before the meeting, and one of the things is, you know, if you were to look at a three-lane gravel road.
Okay.
The question, what I was asking him is, would it be logical at this point, if you're looking at going to a three-lane gravel road, is if you take the height of it down right now? Uh.
Okay.
No, that's what needs to be looked at, and as I explained to him, this is against my own pure self-interest living there, because right now I have a road that blows clear of smoke. The moment you take it down, uh I will be opening up that road a lot before you guys get to it with my tractor.
Yeah.
But it, it needs to be looked at as part of the eventual transition to a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
An urban road.
Again, I think that's just ongoing conversation that'll have to take place with that, because we just started this discussion because the school district wanted to have some numbers to get an idea of what we're dealing with and time, you know, so there we go.
Yeah, the school district is the one who really.
Pushing it, not.
Well, and we, we'd understand.
We know why.
City understands it too, but.
Yeah.
Answering their question.
You had a question?
Yes, um earlier this spring, if I'm not mistaken, I saw a whole bunch of survey road calories out.
Yep.
And uh that's just part of the information, because I know we talked about this during, what was it, strategic.
Even in Horus, yep.
Yeah, we talked about getting some road counts, or I shouldn't say not road counts, but vehicle counts, and have projection, because you put four hundred people or four hundred houses, excuse me, where they're going, and I'm just surprised at how fast that's exploding, and all the other areas that were exploding in traffic. And, you know, those are just preliminaries, saying, okay, we know we have this much count right now, this much, you know, let's say a hundred homes go in this year, you have two-point-five cars, I'm making up a number, you know, whatever the standards are. Can you use some real quick numbers?
Yep.
We haven't heard, we haven't heard from the.
I've requested those numbers from the county, and when they get them in, what'd they say?
They, they don't have them at the moment. They're still on the compiling stages.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's not as easy as, like, when I get out of it, it's not like, here they are, it's like.
Yeah, they can't just forward a file. But anyway, they, they know that we want those numbers. And so I thought it was the end of, middle of August they were talking, they might have a lot together.
And he did say we may be able to get some of the raw data earlier.
So that's, we're after the same thing, because I wanna see what, what we're doing for projection-wise here. See a trend, okay, so how do we forecast events here?
I don't, I don't mean to be talking, that's engineering one oh one.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I can't just go up there and tap on the door and say, give me the numbers, please.
We don't wanna end up with a situation like people run ahead where they had lines and lines of cars waiting to get through to work.
Yeah, yeah.
Seven forty-five.
So.
Happening further south on fifty second.
So anyway, yes, we're gonna get those numbers and we start doing some forecasting on that too, but yeah, seventeen will be the bottleneck. If all these other things come to play, seventeen north will be a bottleneck with a two lane road, no doubt about it. So, alright, anything else, Jim, you wanna add on that seventy-sixth?
I don't think so, I'll just give anything, Brendan.
Russ, you got any last, uh, says on that one, or you wanna just say comment a few more?
The concern I brought up to you last, last meeting was that you have to do something to the road or you cannot build the school.
Yes, agreed.
Cause we were, we were just down to single lane last spring. Because nobody was, we were all too smart to drive to the.
Jim, how long would that take to put a new base in there, get that stabilized up? I mean, you're talking a couple of weeks?
Thirty days, tops, probably.
Three days?
Two, four weeks, something like that. I mean, it can be done.
And then I'm gonna want the heaters.
I'll put in a request for you, how's that?
You.
It will.
Those kind of things actually are done by the construction because you're going to cut off, you're gonna cut those of us off for some period of time.
Yeah.
And we're old.
Alright, we won't go there, we'll just assume that. So anyway, I'd say next, Jim, why don't we, at the next meeting, let's have another conversation about that road again. Bring that up, the, the study that you guys had done before and let's see what we can do. Alright, we'll move along, we gotta talk to Lucas here, he's been sitting there patiently.
I don't think I've said a word yet.
Not yet, man.
Mr. Mayor.
You're up.
Members of the council, uh, the first item I have is section of the grass height ordinance. Um, I actually added a section into this when I was reviewing this and after our last meeting, all I did was certain situations arose in the city where there is a nuisance, um, and the city has to abate the nuisance. I just wanted to add in there, uh, representatives of the city that may go in and abate or remove the nuisance before, it just said, uh, officials. And so I didn't like the way that was classified, cause I don't see you going in, saying it was property and removing any nuisance.
I can't, it just might be.
I know you can, I just don't feel wrong to. So that's, that's what section two does and you'll see, uh, what's underlying is what was added to the ordinance. Um, other than that, sections one, three, um, sections one and three are the same as they were from the last meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, I like that better.
Thank you.
Alright.
First one, uh, I think you have eight inches in there or whatever.
Yes.
Um, and I know that Jim's project is gonna hopefully help, I'm speaking specifically to make the lane area. But for example, I'm gonna talk about the mower, I'm talking about the frontage road, uh, through my front street, don't mind my. Excuse me. Uh, you can't get in there and mow, because some, because I know just, uh, more for the. Because I write down mowers for my neighbor a little bit. I had to pull my mower out two times already and I've got a smart little, okay, let's not go mowing. And you can't see that, and forget going down the back yards, using the sloop. Technically, now if you have a fancy piece of equipment that's got the articulated mower, you can mow. Where's the landowner on the hook for the noxious weeds in this?
And Mr. Mayor, the way the ordinance is written, it basically says, the city will send a letter and if the property owner comes in and says, here's why I can't mow, here's what's going on, the city will obviously make, uh, exceptions to, to the ordinance, if it can't be done, it can't be done. Um, and so it does say in there that the, the landowner, the property owner can come in and talk to the city.
Right now, my point of view is all my neighbors north of me and all of us going along that sloop, we're all in violation of the ordinance. Because we've got cactails, noxious weeds, you know, at least five, four feet near it, because I was in there today crawling around. We got a ton of thistle in there.
Right, but I mean, is it in a waterway? Is the thistle in the water?
It's in the drainage system.
Well, but I'm just saying, if it's wet, obviously you're not gonna be able.
Hopefully it won't remain wet.
Well, it's, yeah. But right now, obviously, if it's wet, you're not gonna go in with the mower, right?
But it stays wet basically all season.
Okay, but then that's why you're gonna come in, that'll be an exception.
That's a difference, it should be like that, it isn't draining properly.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, there's exceptions that'll, that'll have to happen here, we know that.
I'm not destroying it, I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah, we know that that kind of stuff's gonna happen, but this is for in general, cause that's what we're more concerned about right now. Stuff isn't happening on certain lots in town here, among other places, this is.
The big thing is for new development, where the, the development didn't let it sit and it's, it's obvious where they can go in and mow it, they're not doing it. And now this allows for the city to just write a letter and say, mow it or we will, basically.
So, so just to follow up with that, did we ever have any policy advance on what we charged for that? Like if we went out and had to mow somebody's stuff?
Machine hire was a hundred dollars an hour.
Okay, a blanket, right, a hundred bucks an hour?
Exactly.
Okay.
So it would all just depend on the size of the lot, how long it took for them to mow, um, what company you ended up hiring, that, that could be different.
Yeah.
And so it's just basically whatever the cost is.
Yeah, well, that's why I was just trying to get a gauge, make sure we cover our, I wanna make sure we cover our costs if we have to go do something.
Do we have options for a company to call to do that?
Vance would be called in the past to do it. But I mean.
Jeff, Jeff Fox, of course, has always been there.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, we, we have people.
We have people, yeah.
And that would be, the hundred bucks would still be, we don't have it set up in here, do we, a dollar or anything?
No, we don't, but that can be a, I think we could do that, just like we do everything else, we wanna put together a, um.
The only property that, there's one exception in this town, that's the old American Legion building. I actually don't know who owns that. But I sent the guys over there to mow it because it's right on the main drag and we can't let stuff get out of hand, so we're eating that cost. But it takes Mark thirty minutes and he's in and out. But anybody else, we charge.
I don't remember who that got sold to either.
Well, it was Chad Pete at one time, I shouldn't maybe say that, but it's too late, I don't know who owns it now.
Well, yeah.
And I've looked at property records and I still can't determine.
Okay, yeah, alright. But, but Lucas, if we wanted to, we could set up a fee schedule, just like we have with others, if we wanted.
It's just based on the actual cost, there's no, there's no set fee that you're gonna ever have, cause it varies.
Yeah, okay.
So it's just.
So that's how it's worth, is actual cost?
Yeah.
We'll invoice them for, if it makes three hours to mow.
The city will assess the cost thereof, certainly.
All I wanna do is make sure the city doesn't go backwards on.
Yeah, it's on, if you scroll down to the next page, just here.
Just double checking.
Typically, my experience working with these before, has been, we work with the contractor, contractor goes out, mows it and then they give us, they give you invoice each, for each property there. And then that could go to the property owner, uh, or against, or put as a lien against their property, either way. So there's a lot of different ways to try to repeat the cost, but.
Okay, okay, Lucas, I see what you're signing there, okay, I'm good.
I'm good with it.
Alright, so I'm looking for a motion to approve it, John?
A second reading of ordinance.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Brian has a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Okay, so that's a second reading, Lucas, so this will become effective.
Uh, this will get published in the newspaper and then it'll be effective upon that, cause there's a penalty section.
Perfect, okay. Good, then we can get on with that.
The next item I am rather excited about.
Good for you.
We are potentially amending the start time of city council meetings. So in your ordinance, it just says that the city council may, uh, amend its meeting time by resolution. What I did then was draft a resolution for the city council to review. Let me know what you think. So yeah, uh, as you'll see, um, in the resolution, it does say that if it's, it takes effect for your next meeting, cause it is just a resolution, it doesn't, there's no two readings.
And the same thing is true with, if we, if for some reason we needed to move the location someplace else, we can adjust the location.
Location is set by ordinance.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it is in the ordinance.
So just the time, is the only thing that?
Just the time, because even the days are in the ordinance as well.
That's karma.
It is.
And this did make Lucas', Lucas's day when, when I made the request for him to do this one.
Well, it's a little thing sometimes, isn't it?
Right, I shot for earlier, but I got turned down.
I think we should table this for a couple of months and.
Say by December sometime?
Yeah, I think so. Sorry, buddy.
Whatever you want.
Motion to approve the, the ordinance.
You guys are, everybody's okay at six o'clock.
Well, no, 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 motion to approve the resolution for time change.
And are you okay with it, uh, commencing August sixth, I just want you all to be aware of that, that's your next meeting.
We can sure try, but you know, if half the council shows up at seven, you know.
I assume we're gonna have some, some struggles.
Sure, yeah.
But I figure it doesn't change anything to have it, I don't think there's no, I don't think there's any notices out.
I guess that would be the only other thing.
In the paper right now.
We'll just have to notice it and let people know that the time has changed.
Yeah, okay, so, you mean a motion?
No.
Brian made a motion, okay, can I get a second?
Second?
Okay, Chelsea does a second, all in favor?
I've got a comment.
Go.
As far as the first Monday, what about holidays, does that have to be?
This doesn't affect that, it's, it's gonna be your same policy as you always do it, if it falls on a Monday, then either do it Tuesday or do it the following Monday.
I just remember when I first started, four years ago, that we had the ordinance, ordinance set up on the wrong day or whatever.
Mm-hmm, that was like last year, last year.
That was last year, we found.
The second and fourth.
So I didn't know if we had to adjust for holidays or whatever.
I think we're all in sync now. Yeah, plus our location was wrong too, if you wanna get right down to brass tacks, so.
Yes.
Alright, so, Brian did a first, Chelsea did a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, alright, six o'clock, everybody remember that, we're changing the time here. This is gonna be different, difficult, Lucas, so.
I will add an outlook appointment for council so they.
That would be good.
Have it on their calendar.
Yeah, I think that would be an excellent idea. Alright, so, number fourteen, Holman Quick Claim Deed.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, this is more of just an update, you'll remember, a few months back, I believe it was in December, the city entered into an assignment agreement with Southeast Cass, uh, Water Resource District, and it was for the Holman's improvements. Um, part of that agreement stated that, uh, once the bonds were paid off by the district, they would transfer funds to the city, which I believe they already have. That's what Carol, the Secretary of Southeast Cass, informed me of. And then another portion stated that the district will transfer any property it owned to the city. Uh, as a result of that, they owned a lot, um, Lot One, Block One, in Holman's fifth edition. So I drafted a quick claim deed and now the city of Horace owns it.
Okay, well, that was quick.
That was it, you guys have.
Was that easy, where was that?
Sorry, sorry, pump station.
Right, okay.
Yep, and so now the city is completely responsible for the, that pump station and the, the lot, so.
Can I, Corey, I have a check in my desk for twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and some dollars.
So I got you land and money.
So, the question is.
You're just on a roll.
Unbelievable.
For the maintenance of, where do those funds land, do they, and does that end up going into the enterprise funds?
Yes, sir.
So any maintenance of the mowing or any of that would come out of that?
And it, it has a monthly bill, I believe, for probably electricity, I think.
Yes, it does, there is a bill for the.
So it's no different than the, the electricity for the water plant, same thing?
Same thing.
Yeah, okay.
Does that mean I'm a little?
Now, we're taking over responsibility of that, that's now a long-term.
I'll give a word of opinion.
Absolutely, yes.
So, we.
Yeah, they're supposed to be done.
And that's another discussion to decide.
Maybe it was their final plan?
Cause this is essentially a, a drain, correct?
Yep.
Until the school pops and that.
This would be rationale behind why would you have a storm sewer fund? Which we don't have today.
Nope.
We have no. Yeah, okay, alright.
Yeah, that's, that'll be another discussion, okay.
Another discussion.
Yep.
But we got twenty-two grand.
What?
But we have twenty-two grand.
I have.
It helps.
I'm sure it helps.
It helps. Okay, anything else on that, Lucas, or?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Good, alright. We're talking about Riverdale subdivision sanitary sewer, Jim, you wanna give us a?
Mr. Mayor, I was invited to the, uh, meeting of the homeowners of the Riverdale subdivision last Tuesday night. Mayor Peterson accompanied me, we briefed the, uh, neighborhood on potential for municipal sewer as part of the SSL. Got talked about potential options that we have, talked about the ability to maybe create a hybrid system of a gravity sewer in conjunction with the lift station proposed for sixty-fourth Avenue in the Horseshoe Bend area and a low pressure kind of a driver pump type system along the river to minimize the effects in the yarders and to create the most cost-effective type of, uh, system. So, uh, the reception was good, they had good questions, the ask cost was a big one, we have a preliminary cost of, oh, somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars total project cost. And, uh, surprisingly, they were receptive to that cost, there was some.
How many homes?
Uh, homes wise, twenty-two.
Okay.
Roughly. And they did, there were a couple of the residents in that area who had mentioned that their cement tanks are failing or getting very close to failing, and they're very interested in the next to it. So I think it was good for all the residents in that neighborhood to see that there are some people who are gonna be needing it sooner than later and there is the ability to get it, to get it up in that area at a relative reasonable cost.
Could I ask, so we got Riverdale, Horseshoe Bend, what other developments were interested?
The other developments that were interested was Greyhawk was one, and we had, the only, there were basically two that didn't do it, there's one. Shadow Lane was a zero and Orange was zero, so we did, Sunnyside was kind of a toss-up, we have to get the estimate, meet with them. Maple Grove was another one that was kind of a toss-up, wanted more information. Greyhawk was, uh, another one and. Trying to remember that too, I.
Sleepy Hollow?
Next, uh, Sleepy Hollow was one, I think that was kind of a fifty-fifty two, they were, I believe, lumped in with the Sunnyside area type one, so. So now that we've got, uh, some, some more information, we'll be putting together more process for those other subdivisions, meeting with them and getting kind of an idea or a gauge from them, what their thoughts and what their wishes were to be. Uh, we didn't give the Riverdale any timelines or anything, we just told them that, uh, next summer, the sixty-fourth Avenue station is potentially going to go in, so if they wanted to do it about that time, we need to, or later on this fall, so.
We wanna try to create a great big job, don't we, out of this?
Yes, we do, that would be the ideal, cause we have a Horseshoe Bend, and we have a whole lot of shop and they.
Much better.
Designer together, saves money.
Even if some of these, like I'm thinking Sleepy Hollow and Maple Grove, even if you run pipe down the main road or something like that, if you have to for future, that might be, I really wanna see the whole project looked at as.
Absolutely, yeah, it's been defined since the, since the, uh, start of planning for the SSL connection to Fargo to have interceptor lines on seventy-sixth, eighty-eight, sixty-fourth, those, so this would be the, the first, the most northmost crossing that we would have in Fargo, be along that sixty-fourth. And the way that I looked at laying out the lift station on the north, it'd be in the northwest quadrant of sixty-fourth, was to service the Riverdale, Horseshoe. Part of Sunnyside, if we can, there's a little oxbow in there that might make it a little difficult to get the piping through there. The northeast quadrant of that, of that intersection and the southeast quadrant of that, to service that majority of that whole area. So we're looking at it from a regional aspect, specific and focusing on individual areas within that area.
Okay, with all that, what does that, where does that put our numbers? For units?
As far as units, we, I, I don't know, I don't know, I just addressed Rivers, that Riverdale, it's a name, I didn't mean up there.
Cause we all know with a bond being approved, our door is gonna be beaten down with wanting hookup to the SSL.
But we'll still be okay for a while, we've got.
We, we, we do, yes, right now, the only areas that are on, would be on the SSL, permanently would be Lost River and we probably grew out Prairie, that goes to that too, so. And we probably grew out Prairie Peak that goes to that too. So we still, that doesn't give us enough flow to maintain cleaning velocity, so we have to supplement with some lagoon water or, or the like. Uh, there was some talk about maybe trying to look at other existing areas on the north side of town to maybe go over to the SSL for now. So, um, planning, it's, it's planning, so.
As long as you got a plan figured out for all of it, I'm good. Cause do we still need to have conversation with West Fargo?
We will potentially need to look at West Fargo for some of the area of horse that's north of the river, along Fifty-second. That's gonna be difficult to get it back into, into the city of Horace system. It's, uh, I just don't know if the cost, if it will be real efficient or cost-effective to come all the way back when we could go north. And that's something that I've been talking to the Minister of Health and衹s and, and seeing those conversations. And I know he's been discussing, in discussions with the City of West Fargo on that too. So it's a thought and it's in the planning, dwell on that word, but. Along those lines, the SSL, their pressure testing enforcement tomorrow, gas, oil, electric is still working on getting the power out to lift station eight, testing those mains. And then, uh, hopefully we have initiation to start here very soon. Talked to Fargo last week, they're gonna get back to me about, um, when we officially could start sending anything that way. I know we need to talk to, to some of the officials and get the, I guess the loose ends tied up. I don't know what you wanna call them, right? Just some of the.
The work group?
Yeah.
Division of work group?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that those meetings aren't gonna meet anymore.
They aren't. They're gonna be individual with the user.
Right.
So it would be a Horace apart.
So we could just have a direct conversation?
Yeah, we would have to have a direct conversation. Uh, with the engineering department, they said that we could send enough water to do the pump startup and test like that. So without a problem, I can have her back. So I'll follow up with him this week, so.
Okay, good.
Uh, second on the.
Any other questions?
Okay, uh, second on the agenda is, uh, improvement district, those seventeen-seven Maple Lane, Maple Circle, that one. The, we have pre-destruction conference last Wednesday afternoon. At that time, the contractor indicated they'd like to start a week from today. After the meeting, they went back and assessed their schedule and they're gonna wanna start tomorrow. So they're gonna be doing some work on the, uh, behind the curves tomorrow, maybe do some saw cutting and that. And then they'll work, uh, starting on the north end of the Maple Grove subdivision, working their way south to the pond, the, the valley gutters. And the ditch cleanup and ditch grading along that. So, uh, right now, the plan is to do one valley gutter at a time. They might see that they can find a little more efficient way of doing it, a little quicker way of doing it to act less. So I'm gonna visit with them tomorrow morning when their superintendent is on site, so. Uh, hundred seventeen pedestrian crossing, same schedule on that one. They're going to start working on that stripping top soil tomorrow. And they'll do the two projects, same contractor doing both projects. They'll be doing them in conjunction with each other, so hopefully not a lot down time on those.
So it's still on for mid-August for that?
We are. The, the, the schedule was provided was, uh, was right up to the completion date with the day of, uh, cleanup in there. So they felt pretty comfortable leaving both of, uh, both of the, uh, completion dates, so. And I, they did take it seriously, cause they came back a long start and meet earlier, so they are looking at it as, uh, a milestone.
When did, when does school start?
Uh, we have a completion date on the pedestrian crossing of the fourteen-five, I lost it. Later on that, I, I had a completion date of before school started on purpose, so.
I would assume it's around the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, something like that.
So.
Guessing.
Okay, good.
Northwood, Southwood, all wrapped up. Northwood, Southwood is, has no more progress than last time I was here, there is a seal open, it needs to be, it's, could be put on that. I have requested the schedule from that, but it's, uh, I haven't got anything back from them yet, so, uh, that project has a, it's an obvious completion, so they still have time on that. There'll be minimal.
For the, for the seal.
For the seal, oh, yeah. A minimal destruction for that couple hours of work, anyway, so. Water meters, I got some information from the health department today. They just needed a, a letter and some, another form from the low bidder. I got, requested that from the contractor. They will tell me to back to them on, we'll have something here very soon if we.
So literally in the next couple of days, it's.
I hope so.
Ready to go.
I hope so. Hope to get the blessing of that, so.
Good. Okay. Excellent. Any other questions? Alright. Brian, you wanna talk about the twenty-nineteen budget?
Uh, twenty-nine nineteen budget, I wanna just highlight a few, uh, important areas in regards to the general fund. The general fund is the most important part in regards to setting our mills, um, and also moving forward with the budget process. Enterprise funds will be the second half that we'll begin to, probably the next council meeting. I do plan on getting more in depth. Uh, on enterprise funds in the, at the next meeting. Uh, but like I said, I wanna make sure there's a clear separation between general fund and enterprise, because they get confused easily, even though they're different names. Um, with the revenues, you'll see, and even the overall budget, I've been saying this all along, but I'm going to stress it again. The budget will look very different compared to what you've seen before. It's going to be laid out a little differently. We've been working with AE2S on financial modeling for the city to help us identify projections for future years out. Uh, we were able to, uh, set, take the settings on this financial model and say, we wanna be conservative, moderate or aggressive with those financial projections. Now, you never know what the economy could do to it, as you've seen in the past ten years. Uh, however, um, some of the funds that we've been seeing direction from national, or the North Dakota League of Cities has been positive. They've either been stable or a slight increase, uh, but we're still taking that conservative approach with our projections for next year. If some of those revenue, revenues come in higher than what we project, we still get those funds. It just goes into our, what I call the fund balance, so how much you have in your checking account.
When they say a slight increase, we're talking minor percentage, right?
Yeah, like a couple percent. So we're, at least it's a positive.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it isn't, we're not talking a drastic change. Uh, the most, uh, the one that comes to mind the most is state aid distribution. Uh, what, what we have for our budget, what we're projecting is a hundred sixty thousand. That's the same amount for what we have in twenty-eighteen budget, so we're taking conservative approach. Based on what we're pulling in this year and also what we're hearing from League of Cities, it's probably going to go to a hundred eighty thousand, maybe a slight amount higher than that. But we'd rather be on a conservative and safe side than over-projected, because if you over-project every revenue source you have, that's where you run into significant shortfalls. Um. Yep. As for property tax revenue, this number has been brought up to the council before. Uh, it would be to keep the mills the same. And that would be, uh, revenue of eight hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred seven dollars. That is the exact same number that was presented to council. Uh, a cou, couple of months ago by Paul from the county's tax equalization. Other area, other numbers that we're comfortable with, uh, this, bringing forth to council, utility franchise fees. That is for the utilities of, uh, cable providers. Uh, we pull in a franchise fee of fourteen thousand dollars between Cable One and Midco, is that correctly?
Uh, yes.
Those are two.
Yep.
Uh, we do not collect really any substantial franchise fees for gas or electric. However, I'm starting to look into in the future, is that a possibility of pulling franchise fees?
It seems like we have in the past.
Well, you have, they just aren't very much.
We actually do not identify fees within ordinances that we have. We may be pulling in a little bit amount. But in reviewing the ordinances, I could not find any fees, it says, unless Lucas would love to find some fees for us.
The franchise ordinance, I'm pretty sure still has the wrong companies listed.
It does. I believe it had gas of.
Cause they called me on it last.
NSP, Northern State Power. Yeah, so.
Should probably update that.
Might, might not hurt.
I, I am going to be bringing that up with, uh, to see how other cities in the area are doing that with, uh, some future city administrative meetings, just to see what our peers are encountering. Um, I have seen cities before, granted, this is my experience in Kansas, where, uh, the cities pull in franchise fees for electric and gas. Uh, there's a trade-off, like they don't have to, they don't have to pay for right-of-way permits, but they still have to get them. There's, uh, back and forth there, sure. Um, but also we may need to be doing updates, like Lucas said, to the ordinances themselves. And then also the agreements, cause the ordinance outlines a twenty-year agreement, but we don't know how, when was that last visit? We're very likely at that twenty-year passed, if we're referring to MSP in a gas agreement, because MSP has not, has changed over to itself. Yeah. Um, building permits, it was to keep basically the same, a hundred ten thousand per revenue. Um, we're on track to be a little bit under that as of right now, but you never know, August is typically a busy month for building permits. Um, interest income, that is a significant change from, uh, the twenty-eighteen budget. We're projecting fifteen thousand. Uh, based on the move to Starion and investing our funds differently. Uh, basically just playing them into a different type of savings account and putting the majority of the funds into that savings account versus the checking. Uh, managing our money better, we should be pulling in a significant amount more. Uh, so the number I put in is fifteen thousand, could be more. But I'd like to keep it as a, what's over achieved and under. And then the last area that is a new concept to, uh, the budget is having utilities contribute to general fund. With the new rates that be taking effect October first, we should be able to handle some contributions. And if we aren't able to handle it, we, to the general fund, but if we cannot do that, then we just do not make that transfer. So we're reviewing the utilities enterprises, that'll be a discussion in a future time, uh, but we're looking at, can we make that work or not? So we're reviewing the rates and seeing if you could do it, cause right now the general fund covers utilities. And typically you should, you shouldn't be offsetting those dollars of general fund, it should be the other way around. So we're looking at that option as a consideration right now, so, um, and it would be a minimal.
Let's talk about that more.
That's, that's why I'm saying it is a concept.
Yep.
And it would also act more like a contingency to where if it, the funds aren't looking like they could handle that, then we just don't do that transfer. Those are the revenue projections that puts us at, uh, really about one point two five million as a revenue. And I'm giving you a estimate or a rough number, but it's a fairly, it's fluctuating within, you know, ten thousand dollars up or down.
It's up about ten percent from last year.
It, it is up from last year, or the current year's budget, current year's budget was, uh, just over a million dollars, so it is up.
Cause last year was just over a million.
Yes, but, uh, about a hundred thousand dollars of that is just a change in the property tax, uh, evaluation there. As for expenditures, um, we're still working out the expenditures, however, taking into consideration what council's brought up. Of areas of interest or needs and breaking that out. We mentioned water quality was a concern. Water quality is an item that can be really addressed significantly with our CIP. Angle budget typically doesn't address the water quality as much as the CIP, our capital improvements program would. Um, additional staffing, that was a concern, so we're looking into our options there. Um, increased account, or accounting or costs for health insurance due to the special council meeting on the twenty-sixth. Taking that action of how the city would handle health insurance, we have to budget for additional funds. That number is going to be over double what you've seen before. But that number is also reflecting how much the city pays. And then there's a new line item in the revenue showing how much employees are actually contributing for their share of the health insurance. And/or their family contributions, if they have their family covered under the health insurance. So that number really comes out to be more like fifty thousand dollars instead of eighty. Um, but we need to show that offsetting. Uh, the big general fund impact was, or is, uh, Black Mountain Accounting Software, that has been a very consistent, uh, from what I've heard, you know, hearing through our previous meetings. Talking about the budget, Black Mountain is very important and that is number one priority with staff, uh, regarding that. And then another concept here, or another spot we're looking at is, uh, potential of additional vehicle for city hall. Uh, really the community development tractor and really city hall staff to be able to conduct business within the city and writing their, any trainings or anything like that. And that would be a more economical type vehicle than the trucks that we run for public works. And then also you'd see is combining of professional services into one line item, that is gonna be, that would be a different change too. Uh, gives us more flexibility on that. Now we have our own target thresholds and we can break out that cost at any time. Uh, but you just see a one line, line item on the budget saying, uh, city engineer, attorney, law enforcement, it'd all be in one pool, cause they're all professional services. So those are some of the significant changes that you would see within the budget. Areas that we're working on and also wanna get council's opinion on at this time are a suggestion of building reserves. Actual reserve fund, it's right now we have in, like I said, our fund balance, which we have in checking, dedicating, uh, certain pots of money for reserve activities. So, uh, example would be equipment reserve, saying funds aside, in case you have a vehicle that, uh.
Breakdown.
Breakdown significantly to where you have to replace that vehicle. We had that not too long ago, where a vehicle had to be decommissioned and we ended up purchasing a new one. So it'd be decaying funds for that type of situation, uh, protecting yourself in the future if you have equipment. Larger equipment goes down our grade or we have an option, you know, a half a bunch.
It's essentially taking a portion of the budget each year and putting it into that building or equipment fund.
Yes, yes, so we can handle those.
That could actually help us, because for example, we could take some of the capital, you know, on the capital improvement plan, we've got some equipment purchases. So probably we take those off the capital improvement plan and, and just, you, you know, plan for these funds through a separate mechanism.
You could do that.
Okay.
Um, additional staff, uh, one idea has been brought up is, uh, additional staff member to handle like communications, the website, social media. Uh, and then also play a role maybe as an administrative assistant. This could be a part-time or full-time scenario, but, um, where your priorities fall on that. And then we talked about, you know, equipment, just briefly about reserve fund. But then, do you want, would you like in the future have equipment? Right now we pay for it on a general fund. However, the equipment, majority of the equipment is used for utilities or the enterprise, so either highway, uh, water or sewer. So you have it to where you start structuring that funding mechanism to pay for those equipments with those utilities or enterprise funds. So you're freeing up the general fund for other activities. So those are considerations, um, looking to see what council, where your opinions are on those, cause those are kind of the outliers to wrap up the expenditure section to bring forth with a recommendation. Um, so, ears on that. It's, uh, like I said, building reserves, additional staff for communications and the equipment. How, where are your thoughts towards handling those three?
Certainly one of the things we can, sure, on all this is reserve funds, you know, for different things.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree.
Like, it's, it's the how much.
Can we do that at this time and point? Would you my question, how much do we put in?
That's what I mean, I don't know.
Well, we, we've talked about some, for some of the reserves that we do have today, how do we take those funds and carve out portions to initial seed each of these, you know, ready date? I mean, we wanna call them ready date funds kinda, right, for equipment purchases or whatever it is that needs to be done as the year goes on. But then on an ongoing basis, you know, we need to either say, okay, some portion is gonna come out of the highway fund. There basically needs a policy that we're, a procedure that every year, let's say the highway fund, we're gonna take some portion of the highway fund. Either a fixed dollar amount or a percentage, and that would go into this equipment reserve fund. So we, we would need to come up with some funding mechanism for how each of these would get added to. And also what is the policy for, okay, what is something qualified to come out of such, such fund?
I, I agree with that. I think it's, we gotta find that percentage. Be, you're also taking money out of the general fund. I also wanna make sure we're funding some of these projects we're doing and for streets, that, you know, the maintenance part of it. We don't wanna go back to the assessment on everything we do, so it's how do you come up with the funds?
And basically, I'm just looking at, that answers some, if that's of interest, you know, I'm just looking to see, kinda get a general feel of priorities where you want us to. Kinda shuffle the remaining funds around. Uh, we could do a general fund transfer to special highway, for example, that might be an option. Uh, to help pay for more robust street improvements, um, or budget that within the general fund.
And the other, the other piece of this is that for the sales tax revenue, we, we should be saying, okay, that it, we should be spending. Well, and the other, the other piece of this is that for the sales tax revenue, we, we should be saying, okay, that it, we should be spending at least a portion of that, you know, on the prop budget items for twenty nineteen, right? So, whether, I mean, it's gonna continue to build, we need to, we can't just sit there and let it continue to build. We have to use that to reduce the overall demand for residents and everything.
We're getting some money in there now that we can actually do something with, but we also have a new position coming on that's gonna take some of those dollars. We also have some other projects we've talked about during the year that, you know, we've said, hey, you know, our sales tax will pay for it. Well, we need to go back and look at those, how many dollars have we kind of accounted for and what are we gonna see coming up for dollars out of?
That's kinda my point, is that we need to have a policy to say, okay, what kind of things would qualify to take the funds out of the sales tax? And then, you know, okay, we're gonna earmark some funds to offset, you know, a special, you know, rather than special assess the full amount, how would we take some portion of that to reduce that overall special?
Well, you know, twenty-five percent of it, we can use for infrastructure.
Right. No, no. Economic development.
Economic development. Backwards, right?
Yep.
So.
So, it's just a matter of.
What is that?
And, and so of that seventy-five percent, okay, do we carve that up? How much do we take out of that each year? And then for projects that year.
Right.
We need to figure out that policy, so we can start applying that to twenty nineteen capital improvement projects, all right? We know we're gonna have to spend about this amount of money, this is the pool to put, pay down some of the specials, you know, that's an option, right, for us to talk about.
Well, and, and I think with A two S doing, working with them, I think they're gonna help guide us through that. So, I think you're just, yeah, I think you're just looking to, we like what you're saying, Brent.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'm just looking to see where.
You're on the right track.
I'm gonna say, how, how important, I just have one more question comes to my mind, is the staffing, the communication side that has had some interest? How important does that fall? Is that a higher priority or would you say a middle level, low priority? Um, because that affects how I play around with the rest of the numbers to give you a recommendation on the budget.
We can adjust it, but I think that's important.
I think it's a, I don't know, it's a full-time, I don't think it's a full-time, I think it's, at, at most, it's part-time.
Okay.
And if we can get a, you know, college intern or something to help with some of this, you know. How can we make, how can we minimize the cost, but yet get some of the benefit?
Okay. That is what I'm looking for.
Okay, I did have a question, you talked about the format of what the budget was gonna look like. And you mentioned professional fees, uh, specifically engineers and attorney expense. So, when they do a pro, when they do work on a project, is all their, all their bills going into one account? Or does that portion break out? Cause I think that was a discussion we had not too long ago, was we saw what the engineers were paying and the attorneys were paying, which is obviously way too much.
I just spoke with.
We also need to break those funds down and does it go, what project is it going to, or is it our budget?
And I just spoke with Jim earlier today briefly about that, and he's just doing a final review of what they have for this year. And, and then that's late, and then also if, uh, if the engineer or attorney do put time towards a specific project. For example, we have quite a few developments going on, that typically is something that go towards that specific project. So, that is also why, you know, they are grouped together, but I have toned down what we have budgeted for next year's budget for engineering and attorney since their time is going to be put over to those appropriate projects.
Isn't there also gonna be a small budget for each of the individual projects?
That's, well, projects, it depends on the project or what you define a project. Um, what you would see different funds, so you're talking sales tax, that could be a separate, well, budget. Uh, enterprise, each one will have their own.
I was thinking like an improvement district, right?
That has its own budget for legal and for engineering.
Yes.
So, that's what I mean, is we will, we will be able to drill down into the budget for each of those improvement districts.
From what, for, for what Lucas is saying, yes, from the angle of general budgeting, you would see more of a separate budget revise. Probably depending, basically consolidating all those other ones, but that's just, there's gonna be a lot more summaries and summarizing than.
But the idea is we can be able to drill down.
Yes.
So, that's, that's.
For improvement districts, all your fees should come out of the, the assessments, not from any city, city funds.
Yeah.
But I, I just, we kinda wanna see where.
Yeah.
Our normal budget for attorney and engineer would be, I mean, we ask them to do different things at times for studies and.
It's just.
How much are we spending?
Broken down.
So, we're accountable to it.
Yep, I mean, that's, I mean, we don't want Jim to be asking him to do projects and then we end up not doing it. You know, because that's, that's spending money for no benefit for the city. We wanna either stop doing that or either not ask for it in the first place, or, you know, let's figure out what's most important and follow through on it. So, if that, that's, I think that's your point, right, John?
Absolutely.
We just wanna be able to drill down on what are we actually spending money on? And, okay, here's money that we didn't approve the project because it was too much or whatever, or we postponed it, and that could be the answer. But that, we need to be answering for those things that didn't come to fruition this year.
Yep.
Well, I'm thinking the whole study of sewer hookups, I mean, that's not something you can really budget to a number, but there's, there is an expense to that.
Yeah. But anyways, I just wanted to highlight just what to expect, you're starting to get more of a taste of what is coming your own pipe, you're starting to see some more numbers. Um, like I've said before, we wanna get into the weeds just a little bit, skim the top, I don't wanna bring council into the deep, you know, thick of the weeds because, uh, then we're gonna get caught in too many details instead of really focusing on what we're trying to do and retention of the budget, so. And I'd be more than happy to explain, you know, any further details on any individual sections, uh, whatever you'd like. It's just to, you know, not get you too deep into every single section, we just keep going up and down.
It is having that budget model that we can use for the highway funds and the enterprise funds. Granted, self-serving interest, but that, that's really important to me to make sure that we're allocating the funds appropriately. And, and, cause I, I don't feel very confident today, right, that we're al- allocating the money to reduce the specials as much as we could be or should be. So, let's see what we can do to make that improve.
Yep.
Agreed.
So, they said enterprise funds, next council meeting, and you'll see a more complete picture. We'll spend more time on budget at the next council meeting.
Well, we've got, uh, August is when we have to approve, right?
You have to set.
Obviously get a draft of it in the next two weeks.
You, you will have to set the mills.
Right, but, but I mean, we're gonna have a draft of the budget in the next two weeks.
You'll be seeing some more complete.
Yeah.
But like I said, it's through applying to the general fund and at August, in August, we're gonna be setting the mills, once you set your mills, and you can't go up.
We could set the mills right now.
You could, if you want.
You know.
We're not ready for you to do that yet, so I'll say we'll come.
Keep the thought, right?
Yes.
We, we know where.
You, you know where you want to go.
We know where they're gonna be.
Yes, we have a very good idea where it'll be.
To mimic from last year.
Yep.
Okay, Lucas, what?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, regarding to money, I would like to, to get the city some money. Uh, I have here a resolution for your water meters. So, it's a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of wastewater treatment revenue bonds in the amount of four hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. So, if we could get a motion.
Motion.
Thank you.
Okay, John makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Brian, there's a second, all in favor, right, good.
Hi.
Let's roll.
Roll call it.
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
So, Wyatt?
I saw it here and.
Okay, Wyatt. To eliminate any questions, the reason why it's a wastewater treatment revenue bond is that meters are typically used to gauge sewer usage. And that's the way this one is, it's through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is the sewer side of it. And a lot of times, like I said, the meters are used to gauge the most sewer that people use. So, that's the way the health department, we originally had it as a drinking water fund, they had some of the money in the clean water side, so they said we'd like to move over to that side, so.
Also, they just, they just moved it from one sponge source.
Program to another.
Potato, potato.
Same dollar amount, you're just moving the money from this pocket to the other pocket.
Yeah, and so when anyone see a, a wastewater on there, they think.
So, that, that's why they changed.
We're gonna put a meter in for sewage.
Yeah.
I was actually gonna put her on the wrong side.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Don't drink from the meter.
That's right.
Boy, I wish you could find money for us every two weeks, you know?
We've gotten you a lot of money tonight and property.
Yeah, first time in two years.
Lucas, you've done very well.
Thank you.
Try and outdo yourself the next time we meet, how's that?
Yeah.
I'll try.
Just remember, you're rewarded with the change in council time.
That's true.
There you go. All right, that's all we have for budget.
Okay, we'll move on then to portfolio reports. John, you got down, no report on this, that's still a go?
That is still a go.
Dave? Is quiet? Chelsea?